Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome. I would ask that we stand for my allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the God on which it stands, on which it stands, on which it stands, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to say thank you to such a large crowd of people here. And just as a reminder for some of you that might be here for the first time, when we do have comments, maybe we ask that you don't make your comments from the audience. You'll come up here to the podium, please introduce yourself with your name and address, and we'll have your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes unless you're on the appointment list, at which time it runs into 10 minutes. Thank you. On the agenda first tonight is our tax collector. Linda, would you please come forward and give us that information?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk to the taxpayers of Barrington. There's been some misinformation on social media regarding the tax office and the collection of taxes, when they're due. And so I figured it would be a good thing for me to come in and talk to everybody and try to explain the process of the taxes. So, and on another note, if you have questions regarding your taxes, anything, you can call the tax office, and everything is pretty much listed on our website. So I'm just going to read from my notes because I don't want to bear away. The bills go out two times a year and are due on July 1st, not June, and December 1st. The July bill covers April 1st through September 30th, and December bill covers October 1st through March 31st of the following year. Technically, if your tax bill is not paid on before the due date, the following day it is considered delinquent, and it starts accruing 12% annual interest compounded daily. We have already given you 30 days. One misconception is that you don't have, if you don't have the entire bill, that you shouldn't pay it, and that's not true. You can come in as often as you want and make partial payments. And this helps a lot of people who no longer have escrow. So what happens in the tax office between the two billings? There's a schedule that the tax office needs to adhere to through the RSAs. At the beginning of January, we determine the scheduled dates throughout the year, spacing out as required by the RSAs. We also rotate files out to make room for the new year. Older records are kept in a separate storage facility. In January, we start gathering all current and information for the auditors, and the MS 61 is the legal reporting system to the Department of Revenue, and it needs to be completed and submitted to the DRA by March deadline. And we also need to submit a report and charts for the annual town report. It's up to the tax collector to mail within 90 days of the previous due date the delinquency letters, or it's also known as the notice of arrears. The letter informs the taxpayer of any unpaid taxes from the prior year. Most tax collectors mail out in January. I prefer to mail out in February, giving taxpayers more time to pay their bill. Thus, less notices going out. These letters are mailed out regular mail and are an expense to the town, not charged to the taxpayer individually. May 15th is the July warrant deadline. Per the RSA 76, semi-colon, 15 dash A, the select board approves and signs the warrant, which allows me to collect the taxes. Bills are mailed out by May 31st, at least 30 days prior to the due date. The due date cannot be earlier than July 1st. The July bill is an estimated bill and is calculated at half of the full prior year's taxes. You will notice on the bill that the tax rate breakdown reflects half of the full tax rate. In May, we send out the impending lien letters, and these are notices for any unpaid prior year's taxes. The impending lien letters must be mailed out at least 30 days prior to the execution of them. And an unsealed certified return receipt, the cost of which is charged back to the taxpayer along with the printing of the notice. The end of May, the first issued July bills are mailed out. And in June, the execution of lien takes place. Lien's placed on any property that has outstanding monies due for the prior year. Once the property is lien for unpaid taxes, the interest rate goes from 12% to 18%. In July, the tax office is obviously busy collecting the taxes. We get both payments, individual payments, and it's pretty busy. And in August of this year, the deputy tax collector will be attending her third and final year for certification. It's a good time for her to go because after-tax due date usually dies down. August is a quiet month. And the certification training is not only about learning sessions, but also speaking with seasoned tax collectors for advice. It's a great opportunity to network and get lots of information. In September, the notice of impending deed letters goes out, and 30 days later, the town of Barrington can deed and take ownership of any property that has unpaid taxes for three years prior. In October of this year, the unpaid 15 lien can be deeded. Once it's deeded, the town can convict the homeowner or property owner. Also in September, I attend the annual tax collectors conference. The sessions are quite informative. Vendors are there with new products that could improve our jobs. The association's attorney speaks of new laws that are up to be voted on or any new laws that have been passed. Networking with other tax collectors from across the state, sharing stories or how you handle this scenario or that. Some collectors have been at their jobs for over 25 years and have experience that is invaluable. In October, the state sets the new tax rate for all the towns in New Hampshire. And depending on where Barrington falls on that list of all the towns in New Hampshire, determines when the tax office receives the new rate, which in turn reflects when I receive the signed warrant from the select board and can get the bills out, and that determines the due date. So it's not always December 1st. If we got the rate, and we've been very fortunate to get the rate early, but if we got it late, the bills would be due probably in December. Let's see. And you'll notice on the second and final bill of the year that will reflect the new interest rate and the tax breakdown show the entire year's rate. Remember, the December bill covers October 1st and to March 31st of the following year. In October, at least 30 days after the impending deed letter, the execution of deed will take place. The town then takes ownership and is responsible for the property once deeded, and the execution process begins. Of course, we don't like to see this happen, and we do try to work on payment arrangements first before the deeding happens. But sometimes it just isn't possible, unfortunately. Sometimes people just can't afford to live with that. And then in December, the bills are due, and it's busy again. Throughout the year, the tax office is responsible to process payments to record non-pleading lien redemptions for lease, re-lease with the registry deeds, provide the treasurer and finance director monthly financial reports to reconcile the bank deposits, provide information for the yearly audit, provide the select board with tax department annual budget, provide the rec department with tax updates for their quarterly newsletter, and respond to any requests from title companies, banks, and customers, either by email, telephone, fax, and maintain the department's website. Making taxpayers aware of any credits or exemptions that they may be entitled to, and then working with property owners with payment plans to get them caught up on donating taxes. Keeping good records is key to the tax office, and we take pride in doing just that. All correspondence, legal notices, et cetera, must be produced when the town decides to deed a property. And if something's missing, it could get thrown out. I hope that before someone speaks badly about our office or any department in the town hall, they stop and think of all the things we do do. Just because you don't see us doing things doesn't mean we aren't doing things. And I encourage anyone who has questions or concerns to contact us directly. Ask us anything, and if we can't give you the answer, we will find someone in town hall that can. So the good news, and I'm hoping very much that this gets signed, the good news is the laws on the interest rates on property taxes and liens, on tax and liens are changing, hopefully effective 2019. The interest rates hopefully will be dropping, the 12% down to 8, and the 18% down to 14. And hopefully, this will not affect the interest that the town collects because that affects the budget as well, its income for the town. But I just want to thank everyone for your time and consideration. I hope this has answered some of your questions, and if you have any other questions, you can certainly call us.
Linda, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Before we go any further, I would ask the members of the audience, please check your phones and make sure that they're up, please. And if you're in the emergency service people, I understand, might leave them on. Thank you. John, do you have anything you want to add to Linda's presentation?
We could deal with any questions under public comment. If people come up under public comment and they've got questions, we'll deal with them.
Very well. Chief Williams, please.
So we don't like to do things alone, kind of like the five of ours. So I brought people. So you two will come over with me. And these two have brought people, so they got a strong family support system in place. So if you guys want to slide right down, you can go right down. And you two are going to come over here. Excuse me, sorry.
Dan, Dan, help them down, please. Jake, is that everybody? That's it. Thank you.
All right. So we hired two new police officers, and it's Donnie and Tim. Donnie Morris, Tim Seawood. So we're happy to have them. I promise I'll keep this short. So thank you for starting off and letting us use this venue to introduce, you know, our new staff. I think it's important that the community get to know, you know, the police officers so when they do see them around town, they know who they are and they can kind of put a name with a face. We've changed a little bit in law enforcement. It used to be Chief Williams, Officer Morse, Officer Seawood, Lieutenant Joy, Officer Barber. As we evolve and do better, it's more of, if I could get some people in the community in venues like this, it always works, you know, okay, chief, does a sign of respect and things like that, like select persons. But if I were to walk into Kaliff's and somebody, hey, there's Bob, then I know I've made it, and I've made the connection with the community. So don't be afraid to call us first name if we're in a public setting like this. That show of respect is always nice, but just know that you can call us by our first names. So first, I'll start off with Tim, who's on the other side. Tim is supported by his family, his mom and dad are here. His girlfriend Erica is here tonight, fiancee, they're going to be getting married soon. So Tim grew up right in Rollinsford. He graduated from Somersworth High School, and then he went on to UNH, and he graduated with a bachelor's degree. What it took for Tim to get here today is enormous. Through the hiring process, the extensive background, polygraph lie detector, psychological testing, medical testing, physical fitness testing, and then the extensive, you know, background that's done by our in-house staff with family, friends, and getting to people that he may not have put down as references as well. So with that, when I review the final product, you know, some key points stuck out with Tim. Things like hardworking, honest and driven, enjoys working with people. These are all key ingredients to be a successful police officer. They really are. So Donnie, same thing, is, you know, went through the extensive. He's got your name there. You know, same thing, polygraph, which is our lie detector. And those were fun, right? You enjoyed that. On that box, we call it the box. You can't beat it, you know, the stories, but it measures, you know, sweat, heart rates, blood pressure, it measures everything, so you can't beat it. And same testing battery that Tim or Donnie did. These two didn't know each other before they started the process, and now they've actually become good friends. They're actually on the same training schedule, just by chance. They're going to go to the August Academy together, so it'll be interesting to see, you know, the bond grow and develop. Donnie's lived in Barrington since 2006. He graduated from Dover High School, and then he went on to Plymouth State University and graduated with a bachelor's degree. Donnie's background, you know, reflects motivation, professionalism, polite and driven to succeed. So a lot of the similar characteristics, you know, they share, so I was very pleased with that. Again, they're all indicators that he's going to, he has the foundation to be as successful in this profession as well. Both have no experience. They'll go to the August Academy, but that doesn't matter because they both have what it takes, as I just mentioned. Both of them are fine examples of the next generation of professionals entering law enforcement, and I mean that. You know, we need good people, and right now, there seems to be a shortage because of lower unemployment, and that's what happens. Want to be a police officer for 19, 20 bucks an hour, or you want to go somewhere else where you can make six digits like that? So that's what we're faced with. So these are two good officers that, you know, I'm really looking forward to, and I'm proud to work with you. So you have my commitment that we will provide, you know, the opportunity for both of you to succeed. You just got to provide and drive, that's it. I can't make it simpler. So you have that commitment from me and everybody else in the police department. All right? So ceremonially, I'm going to go ahead and square them in. That's the oath of office, and that's the public trust that you have with us and that we, you know, have with you. And then their significant others are going to go ahead and pin the badge. So if you guys want to kind of stand over here, and then you can sit around and go over there. Tim, why don't you come here, face me. Donnie, face me. And sorry, folks, that we're kind of in the way here. So raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. I do solemnly and sincerely.
Solemnly and sincerely.
Swear in firm. That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the town of Barrington.
As a police officer for the town of Barrington.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God. All right. Sit around. You guys can pin the badges on the new officers. That's all I got. Thank you for having us.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Donnie, Tim, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We look forward to your service, thank you.
This is pre-broadcast on Channel 26. It's also on YouTube if anyone wants to go and find it from looking at our website. So it's just an FYI.
John Wallace, please. Phil Oger, thank you here.
My name is Phil Oger, okay. Good evening. I guess the furser business is discussing this town a lot at the end of Marsh Road, on Marsh Road formerly, which I presume you received a memo that I, back in April, sent to you folks about it. Just briefly reminder, this is one of the main accesses to the Stonehouse Forest property, the 1,500 acres that was conserved, now owned by the Southeast Land Trust of New Hampshire. And they are in the process of developing their management plan for it for recreation uses and for wildlife conservation and various other things. And one of the things, particularly for the recreational aspects they're working on, is parking. And I brought out the fact that the town owns a little quarter acre lot right at the end of Marsh Road on Route 202. And they were hoping that the town would allow them to put in a parking lot on that property by whatever legal means, you know, whether you want to deed it to them or just give them the right of way or whatever could be determined. Just want to see if we can make that happen because it would obviously be a great asset to the town to allow better parking so people can access this great recreational resource for the town. Conservation Commission unanimously recommended that we do so. That's, in a nutshell, what it's about.
Questions?
Mr. Air? I'm not waiting to bring any public comment.
Right.
I want you to bring, what is it, yeah?
This is time for the select person to ask. Do you have any comments you'd like to ask?
Well, we got to keep in mind, Cooper Hill Road in Nornam. We have to keep in mind Cooper Hill Road in Nornam. Nornam reservoir is shut down, it threw traffic. And Cooper Hill is a scenic road. So I suggest we do nothing with Cooper Hill and leave it alone. But that may affect there, there's no crossovers from there.
Mr. Air, please, stay with Marsh Road on this one here, please.
I was trying to go from there. There, there's no crossovers, it's through town, but it's a thing of part of the master plan. And there was time spent on the master plan, we need to address the master plan. For the citizens.
Any other questions?
No. Chair Bailey, I took the time to drive out at the other end of the property here to see where Marsh Road led to. And I do understand what select person Air is indicating may be a future need as far as expansion of roadway. I think, John, if I understand this correctly, you're proposing not necessarily that the town provide the land just that they allow parking on it?
The Southeast Land Trust has said they're amenable to whatever. They would like to build a parking lot, they will maintain the parking lot, you know, give them permission to do so. I mean, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be forever, although probably they would hope it would be so, but...
How many parking spaces are already available to that recreational area?
Well, there's no formal parking places at this point in time. The access to it has been from an old woods road further up where you can park, I don't know, maybe as many as a dozen cars. There's a little spot on Mary's Old Road at the moment that can put two or three cars, and I think they're planning to expand that a bit. Beyond that, I'm not really sure exactly what they have in mind.
Is it at all possible that where the land trust is, that given the amount of land that they could expand on that road that you're discussing and put in a parking lot?
Well, the problem is, I mean, there's road access to the property is very difficult. Marsh Road is a classics road. So particularly get to the interior parts, it's a...
It's bumpy, yeah, probably.
Surely you didn't drive it all the way through because you would, you're going through a good deal of water because of Hoover Dam flood, the dissection of it. And the access right from Route 202, in this case, makes it particularly appealing. There is not a whole lot, very little access on Class 5 or better roads. There's a little bit on Mary Hill, you know, of course, that's a complete other end of the property, so they're trying to make access. And there's the access from Stonehouse Pond, I must say, as well. Of course, that property is actually owned by Fish and Game in that parking area, but there will be connections from that area into the Stonehouse Forest. They're just trying to make it better as a more useful. And Stonehouse Pond gets really jammed with fishermen, especially during trout season, of course. So for other users, that becomes rather difficult.
So how many spaces do you anticipate trying to create if the town wants?
You know, I don't know exactly what they have in mind. My guess would be 10 or 12, but I, Phil's not here. If anyone's Marsha, you don't know anything about that. I don't think they're planning on paving it or anything, at least not at present. And who knows what the future could hold, but right now, they just want to get a place so people can access the property from there.
Is that true?
No, I think that, I mean, I think it's nice to know how many spaces, and I appreciate the fact that you don't know and why I say you do. But it's just that there's people living on it, Row 11 on the class 3.
Not, I don't think there's going to be on that.
I'm sorry, I'm on Swain Road.
Yeah, you're on the next one, Swain.
There are people living on Long Marsh Road on the other end, but not of Route 202.
Well, I think that all of the turnarounds, whether they be for town or whether they be for this, I think there's something that needs to be looked at and addressed and do what has to be done. And as I say, I include the ones that have the town, the town roads and access to, so...
John, I guess it's down to me. On the conservation easement date, it states that there are some things and some things that the land trust people can, cannot do. One of whom they have on is they have to maintain that road coming into it because it goes to their section. And secondly, they're...
Which road? I see you meant that.
Marsh Road coming in, put access to the property on there because it is going to be a recreational use also. They're supposed to maintain that road according to...
Okay, I didn't remember that, but it could be against.
Okay. And secondly, that why can't they use their property? Before you answer, on page 13 of the thing, it says they are allowed to turn around and put parking on their own property. And so I'm asking you, why do we need to give up other pieces of property so they can have the parking on it? I know we need parking, I'd like to see people access it like we do some of the other facilities. It's questions I have for them, it has to be for them, but now it's you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Phil is here, but I can't give you a direct answer, but I can guess. I just, the ease of access from Route 202 clearly is, makes it much, much more amenable to public access, and it'd be a large expense to trying to upgrade that road from the 202 and in the little ways to where they could put a parking area. I mean, it could be done, but it's a major expense for them. And, you know, it's just trying to make this a user-friendly area sooner or later and at minimal expense, which you can understand.
See, I don't think it's fair for me to ask these questions of you because it pertains to what they want to do.
Yeah, no, it's... I thought Phil was going to be here some night, I guess.
So did I, I did. And one of the other questions I would have for you is the trails. They're supposed to have something to us by 1st of September on where the trails are going to be and everything else. So that's why I feel it's unfair for me to ask you these questions, and I would like to talk to you about maybe, and the board, of course, is to maybe put this down another time and Phil could be here with you so he can answer all those questions.
Yeah, sure, we can postpone it again if needs be. Yes, if there are questions I can answer, that's important.
Thank goodness this time it's not the board's fault. How does the board feel about that, going till July?
Yeah, I think that would be more appropriate. I question, John, if you could comfortably put in the 10 to 12 parking spots on the actual land.
It is a quarter of an acre, and I don't recall it having any, but I don't really know that property well. I was on there many years ago.
I guess I definitely would like to see...
Well, I may be wrong about that number, maybe they're talking four or five. I really, I'm sorry, that was my guess, was 10 or 12.
I want to ask the board members to, if you, where to move this to go next month?
Motion to table it?
Well, I think that it'd be nice to know where Phil can be here. I mean, he was here last time.
Yeah, that got shut down. Last time he shut you down. Yeah, revenge is sweet, I guess.
Be sure that he's, could be available.
Well, let me ask this to the board then. If we can't do it in July, maybe we can go to August pertaining to the date that Phil's going to be here. Is that acceptable, Mr.?
Yeah, I would like Phil to be able to provide information if you're capable of using the land that was not blocked through ways for future development in any way for the town. I think that becomes important.
Well, future development can't really happen there because both sides of the property are now owned by Southeast Land Trust, by Conservation Eses. But yes, if you need a thorough road.
Mr. Air, your questions?
Can, will you give John and Phil more directions with questions so they're prepared to come and share?
I'll ask my questions. I think we had the, we would be able to do that.
Or you want to reflect the minutes to Phil understands what?
Yeah, I can review that.
So if I may, one of the board, I'll, when you see the minutes, if your question is not in the minutes, why don't you get it to me so that we can get Phil both the minutes and any additional questions you may have thought of afterwards or anything I failed to get in because the minutes are just a summary, I didn't have everything in here.
Sure.
John?
Okay, I will, what are the dates of those July or August meetings? I'll check with Phil and find out when to build.
July 16th and it's for August, John?
I'm pretty sure August would be, I'm not sure.
How long can we get back to know that?
Okay.
Next.
I'll email it to you.
Okay. Just kind of while we're in this area town, may I ask, I know we sent another memo about the possibility, I know it won't be go to a warrant article, of having, having that road converted from a Class 6 road to a Class A trail. And you said it wasn't an appropriate time to discuss it. I just want to know, when will it be an appropriate time to discuss it so that I can bring that back as a possible warrant article?
Right now, we're kind of handicapped, we're missing one of the select persons. It was intended to go for next month, but I will verify that. If not, we'll put it down for August. I did tell you it's going to be this month or next month.
For that? Okay.
Yeah. I want to have full board for that there. And the reason I say the full board on Mr. Knapp's notes he sent in, he didn't mention that at all, so it'll be within the next two months on that.
Okay. Oh, I guess that Phil will probably want to be here for that as well, so we could kill both of those first, so.
August 20th.
In July 16th?
Yeah.
And John, I'm going to pass this down, but my question will be, can parking exist on the actual conserved area?
On the actual conserved area? Yeah, I don't, I have not read over, at least not from on time, the actual details of that conservation easement, so I don't know. No, no panic. Certainly, I don't know, yeah, let's just leave it that.
John, I'd like to move on now to the other, the other two parking areas that were originally started with.
Okay. As to the one over on the Caleb property on, just off of Town Farm Road, as you may have heard, that that parking area has now been completed. Just very briefly, when the work was done and they pulled up one of these huge big oak stumps was on top of it, discovered there was a huge boulder right underneath that had stuck up about a foot from the parking area. And that boulder was too big even for the excavator that was moving the giant rocks to take care of. But that has now been leveled. That rock is no longer an obstacle, thank goodness. And there are some hazard trees in the area too. And I have already prepared the memo, I'm just, I just ran it by the other conservation commissioners, not a memo, an RFP to get some local tree people to see, have them quote for what it would take to trim those down. I had a town resident, A.J. Dupree, who's a, an arborist out there a week or so ago, he took a look at him and said, yep, go, definitely need to come down and you need to hire someone to do it. So that ideally is going to happen in the next few weeks. But the parking area is now open to the public. And so I've been meaning to put something out there on social media and on the town website about that. And we'll get the trees taken care of. If you out there and park now and a tree falls on you, please don't sue the town.
John, thank you very much for everything. I really appreciate what you've done, conservation of the town and also to help lead the town to this park. I want to thank you.
Did you want to ask about the other parking area as well, or is it...
That's what I'm waiting for, the next thing.
Okay. I mean, that was the one for the Goodwill property, right on Route 20? I can just say, I did contact Jeff Adler from DuBois and King. They have offered to design a lot for us for free, very nice of them. We did pay them to get some survey work done for in and around that. And I just contacted Jeff again, he'd been very busy, one can imagine. And he says he'll get a plan to be in the next week, so that's all I can die of. So yeah. How much it's going to cost, et cetera, et cetera, remains to be seen, but the lease is in the works.
Again, John, thanks for everything. I really appreciate it. Any other comments you'd want to go out, please?
I think one thing, and I don't know whether this goes to Mr. Wallace or what, but I think we need to discuss and decide whether we really want to see the classics road turned into a road.
Class A trail.
Who knows? In the future, it might be a good through road to something. So I'm just saying, I think it's a good thing to discuss. I don't know how Sheila feels about it, but...
I think they should stay Class 6.
See, I do too.
Because you gotta, you know, nobody can see what's happening down the road.
Absolutely.
Then I could start putting forth, points of attitude, probably better wait till we have...
Yeah, that's why I just brought it up as a possible discussion.
All right.
Thank you, John. Peter, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Extended appointments is Peter Prichet.
Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself.
Please.
Good evening. My name's Pete Prichet. I live on 710 Washington Street, Barrington, New Hampshire. What I have tonight is Castle Rock Road, which is a Class 6 slash private road. I'm not really sure what it is anymore. Is it Class 6 or is it private?
Private.
It's private, okay. And anyways, I had, I was one of these successful bidders on, when I went to bid, so I got Lot 60, which is at the very end of Castle Rock Road on the left. And my concern was I had, I called up Peter Cook, he came up, Rick Walker actually came up there, we met there one morning, to discuss road improvements. And some of their road improvements that they had, you know, they gave me a classics binder that gives certain requirements, and then a private road binder that gives other requirements. So it's kind of like a gray area right now. We really don't know, I mean, we would like to meet the requirements, but I guess I went to bid or something like that and some engineers come up with a $1.3 million estimate. I don't know what that means to me because, I mean, I have to pay that in order to buy this property? Do I have, you know what I mean? Do I have to put culverts in and move power lines to meet the 20-foot requirements? And then let's say I did pay it, let's say I wanted to pay the $1.3 million, which will never happen, but let's just say I did. Do the neighbors that are there get a free ride? I mean, after all, the road is plowed amount and is accessible. And what about the future people who move in there? Do they have to pay since I've already, kind of, do I just beat the whole hundred, well, I mean, $1.3 million? And is there no requirement for anybody to make some kind of restitution towards me to free some of the costs? So it's kind of a gray area. Really, nobody really could say what I need to do and what I need to do. I mean, what I would propose, I'd like to leave the road just the way it is. And Mr. Walker gave a good thing for as far as safety apparatus getting up there. One of the neighbors, which is, the houses are like right there at the end of the property. One of them, when he purchased, before he purchased it, I guess there was supposed to be a turnaround for the apparatus, fire or ambulance. Well, he put a fence up, so it was never, it was never really enforced. So I guess my proposal is leave the road the way it is. And if I was to build that property to live on, then I would, I would like to, I would even, I wouldn't mind if even enforced me in writing to make a turnaround for the apparatus. I think that would only be fair, since it's the very last property, I think it'd be required anyways. I wouldn't mind doing that. Now, in the bidding process, it said to make Class 6 improvements and also private road improvements. Like I said, some are enforced, some isn't, it's kind of a gray area. Nothing was really in the bidding process to kind of alleviate that. So I mean, if nothing could be resolved on this, I'd be owning a piece of property that I could never build on, I'm not going to pay $1.3 million, which is literally sense to upgrade the road, then could I, could I get my money back and just continue it as a wash? And I'll just, you know, just maybe give to the other successful bidder and maybe they could come up with the $1.3 million for the requirements. That's, that's all I know on the class.
I appreciate that. And one of the items that we have is the road agreement with other people there. And we had extensive discussion with Mr. Cook, Mr. Rick Walker, and with the town employee and part of the planning board. And it all comes down, it all comes down to certain requirements that on your application refers to certain things under the subdivision which are required. So that takes care of part of the gray area, tells you extensive exactly what happens. And so you can get a better idea, and I'm going to have John reiterate what was brought up before and even move that with you. So that way it'll be clear and precise instead of myself who is not clear and precise on this particular man, but no, but nothing but to pass it on. Thank you. John, please.
I understand that the $1.3 million, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, was to bring it to Class 5 standards all the way in, correct? No, that was just to fix it from the top of the hill?
Top of the hill to the end of the road. Nothing to do with what's already there.
Was that to bring it to the required Class 6 standard?
Bring it to the planning board standards for a Class 5 gravel road. And then which, which after discussing with him...
Yeah, come in, Peter. Please.
I'm the one who told Mr. Prichet, come, by the way, you have a really cool name, Peter.
Well, thank you. We went out there and they gave him the Class 6 private road policy. Before that, John asked me to get DuBois and King. I got DuBois and King out there. Unfortunately, before the property was sold, we didn't get their response. I got their response Monday on what it would take to upgrade that road. So right now, we have Class 6 private road policy, we have the planning board regulations, and we have fire codes and safety. All three of them are different, all three of them are, you know, are as gray and stuff like that. So I got the price from DuBois and King like I was asked to do. I told Mr. Prichet, this is what it is, from the top of the hill, like I said, the park that's already there from, from Bruce the Road to the top of the hill, that has nothing to do with that price. That price is just from the top of the hill to the end of the road to provide a turnaround for safety vehicles, wetlands to issues, as you saw in the bid, is, you know, the depth and the hollown, you gotta build that up, you got, you know, the slopes, you've got, you know, retaining walls, there's a lot of work there, not to mention the blasting and the drilling. So I told Mr. Prichet that he needed to come to the board, or he should come to the board and see what they want him to do. Whether they're going to abide by the Class 6 private road policy, whether they're going to go with the planning board regulations, or whether they're going to go with the fire regulations. Fire regulations being as far as gray, the stiffest one, because they only allow 8% gray. The planning board regulations are 10% gray. So then at that point, Mr. Prichet said, oh, jeez, you know, $1.3 million to build a $300,000 home? And I'm like, hey, I agree with you. You need to go talk to the board of selection and see what they're going to require you to do. And that's what brought us here.
John, do you have any other questions for Peter before we finish?
No.
Thank you, Peter. Want to continue, John?
So the, it is going to be very expensive to fix that road up to any one of those standards that has been laid out here because of the salt, the wetlands and, you know, the turnaround and the legs that's in there. So while we, while the $1.2 million is to bring it all the way, my reading of this is that you would be allowed to go, and Marsh is here, and the planning, she understands this better than I do, but my understanding, this would be the Table 3, the minor access private road as to the base gravel, that normally on a private road, you're not required to pave it, so the paving wouldn't be a part of that. That what is in here about clearing, rubbing, subbing, space material compaction, 12.8.2 would not apply, but then there would be shoulders looming and seating because you're going to have some pretty steep slopes where you have to fill crossing that wetland, that all of those would apply. The difference between 10% and 8% on the road, I don't think we're ready to tell which of those it is, but that's not the big cost on this, on this project. The big cost is going to be the wetland crossing with the steep slope sides as you fill it so it's not such a steep hill.
Right.
Does that answer your question as to what's expected?
Oh, it is, but I just can't see anybody building there to put those costs into the road. It just, it doesn't make any sense. You're not going to spend $500,000 to put a $300,000 house in, doesn't make any sense.
Nope. And it is going to be very expensive to get one house in there.
Right. So that was also on your bid specs when you, when you received the bid to talk about upgrading the road?
It did mention upgrading the road, but it didn't say $1.3 million worth.
I can understand that. I just wanted to make sure that you weren't blindsided by the fact that you was going to have to upgrade the road.
And I understand that, and I understand that. But, you know, if that $1.3 million was in there, I wouldn't even waste my time to put a bid in.
I can understand that.
I don't think anybody would have been, and then that would have been a moot point. But since I was held back or just didn't meet the timeline, that kind of puts me in a pickle. So I would require a request that, since I wasn't informed of this information, but it just wasn't available, that I would just require a refund and just let the land go to somebody else, because it's just not feasible to hold.
If I may?
Please, Jim.
It was clear the requirement would, would be fairly significant with the fire and the codes that were there. There was no dollar number with it until after you bid. So, so that, that is, to understand what the engineer thought it would cost to do this was not there, but understanding there was going to be a significant improvement required was there. I'm not opposed, you're getting your money back, it's up to the board.
Questions?
Do you have the property?
No. Now, they, I mean, that was one thing I was thinking of, you know, own the property, there's no way I would, I would pay those kind of costs to get the road upgraded, not that kind of, but what I could do, if somebody, if I appointed somebody, I would just offer the property to them. Because that would probably never develop and at least make them have more.
John, what was the value of the property?
Um, just a second. I'll go back to page 47.
You don't know what the bid was? Is that what you're calling?
Oh, you mean...
I want to know the actual value of the property.
Oh, you mean what the assessed value was?
Yes.
I do not have Suzanne's file with me, so I do not have that. It was...
What did you pay for the property?
I paid $1,510.10. And it's 3.6 acres, and I figure at $29,000, it come up to $660,000 zero in taxes.
I think you gotta take into consideration what you've required of other people. And I could name some few that really paid dearly, or their, meaning, for instance, Oak Hill Knopf. I mean, this, this road's, people have put a lot of money in just to get a house, so, I mean, I think that's something that you have to take into, we would have to take into consideration before we said, well, no, you wouldn't have to do it. I mean, it hits, sometimes it doesn't go the way it should.
That's true.
But I mean, there was two granted variances last week that didn't have to do a thing to Isaac's turn. Is that right? I don't know.
Please be so. I'm sure they're, they're happy about it.
Well, I'm sure they are, and I don't blame them. I would be too.
You know, it's just that it's, it's at the very end, so that's assuming I don't get the property, I decide not to take it. And I lose the 50, $151, whatever it is. The road will never be upgraded. I can't see anyone put that kind of money in. I can't see the town of Barrington doing it because there's houses there now and it's just going to be grandfathered in, which it is, and that's just the way it is. And so that land will probably never sell. Nobody's going to put that kind of money in for an upgrade. And there's no butters as of now.
What would you like to do, say? Doesn't seem possible with the board.
Well, what I suppose, I guess that's leave the road the way it is.
Well, what I suppose, I guess that's leave the road the way it is. It's only built.
No, you can't do that. You can't, you can't. I wouldn't vote for that, for one, because it's not right. It was put on the contract when we went off the bid, and it was listed in that upgrades would have to make a move on the road. Yes, you're absolutely right. There wasn't $1.3 million on it. I would never have thought it would have been that either. I would be looking at 700, 800,000, but not 1.3. So that's why I see.
Well, if not, I mean, if we can keep it the way it is, I mean, you know, it's just not feasible, then could I get my money back? I mean, I think it's fair. I wasn't privy to all the information. I would have made a better educated guess.
John, have we historically ever had a situation like this?
I really don't remember. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money here.
No, I understand. My big concern is setting a precedent for this more than anything, to be honest with you. I think that if it were me prior to purchasing something like that, I would have done the due diligence of at least watching the video that's available to you for prior meeting and understanding exactly what was being proposed. I would not have entered into a contract by a piece of property with understanding, because I'm very clear that at the meeting prior to opening the bids, we made it very clear what needed to be required on that piece of property. My big concern is not the amount of money. The big concern is setting a precedent for something like this over such a small amount of money. Where does that place our responsibility going forward as a town?
Well, if you want my, I'll put my two cents in. Don't put it to bid till that, all the information was available, and it wasn't. But if it was, then I wouldn't be standing there, because I just wouldn't put a bid in for it. And I don't think anybody else would either.
I think that the information of what was going to be required on that road is very clear. And to be very fair, even I understood what was happening on that road. And I guess my assumption was the fact that you bid on it, that you were either in a butter or you were going to farm the land or what have you, but...
Or want to live on it.
Yeah. Well, it's unfortunate. I think if you wanted to live on it, it would cost a lot more money, and it wouldn't have been, yeah, correct. But I think setting a precedent for this is unfortunate, and that's me weighing in on it.
I already had one, and I think that you've got to use everybody the same way. I was just looking at this B of policy of the board of selectmen regarding construction of six private roads, and it clearly states in B what the standards are for class six and private roads must be. And so it's, you know, it's, the information's available, whether it's more than anybody wants to spend, that's understandable.
Well, and what it is on that is that I understand the class six road upgrades and all that, which is fine, but I don't live on Castle Rock Road, so when I go up there, the road's passable.
But you want to live on it.
I do, so I don't know what a class six or a class five looks like. The road's passable.
I mean, I think that's what you have to take into consideration. What did you buy it for? You bought it to build a house?
To live on.
And, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that, but it's...
You've bid on other properties as well, didn't you?
I did.
Were you going to live on all of them?
No.
Were you going to build and then sell the properties?
Well, eventually I would like to.
Yeah.
But that was one of the better lots.
It's a larger lot. It is. And that's specifically why at the meeting prior to opening these bids, we very clearly indicated what needed to happen with that roadway. I think with any real estate transaction, that there's responsibility on the part of both the seller and the buyer, and my biggest, I mean, you know, the biggest concern is what precedent do we set if we were to refund those deposits?
Yeah, we're getting redundant in the same question.
Yeah.
Mr. Frichette has made a request. Is there anybody that wants to make a motion? Saying a request to be denied for the $1,500...
Well, it was only $150.
Yeah. $150, it's not for the $150. So a request to be refunded is denied.
Okay.
Have any other statements, sir?
No, I just want one more comment unrelated to this. Is there any time in this form time?
That will come in the public comment, and that'll be coming up after we finish.
Are you formally, can you just give me something saying you're formally withdrawing if you ask?
Yeah. That's all for now. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. Public comments is going to be limited to three minutes, and if you do have a public comment, please state your name and your address and give us your comment. Who would like to be the first one? Mr. Diamond, please.
Yes, my name's Steve Diamond. I'm on the planning board. Oh, 219 France Road. I presume it's a safe assumption that everyone here, everyone who's a town official believes in democracy, believes in their role as a public servant. So I'm confused about, I have recent development I saw at the planning board and a vote that occurred in 2016. The Community Rights Ordinance was passed that year narrowly, but it did pass, and its central point, it had a lot of aspects, but its central point was making illegal extractive industries as a reaction to what happened in Nottingham with the USA Springs, right, for a very long time, a long drawn-out campaign was eventually successful. So the central point of this, of Community Rights Ordinance, was to prohibit extractive industries, specifically mentioning gravel pits. So now we're two years later, and I am confused as to why the hard rock excavation program, which is clearly a new gravel pit essentially, to sell gravel to outside of the town. I don't understand how this is in front of my plate, and I don't understand what I heard from the town planner at the last planning board meeting, explaining to me that the town's lawyer was asked whose purview it is to enforce this vote, and that it's not the planning board's. I brought forward legislation in the past, and when the voters didn't support it, I concluded that it must mean that either I didn't bring the voters with me, or maybe it wasn't a good idea. So I assume that other town officials would take the same approach.
Thank you. Anybody else have another comment?
Daniel Leah, 334 Old Conterman, 66 Castle Rock. I was one of the bidders on it, and it was by everywhere, and I was aware of the conditions and stuff, but I want to know who authorized this estimate on a private road. When I clearly stated at the meeting, I made a comment in public that it's a private road, and the town will have to cannot put any to a private road, or they'll subject taking it over, or given the association falls pretense. So can you raise look into who ordered this?
I will get the answers for you, and I'll get back to you on that.
I did. All right, and then I've had three engineers out there, and their numbers are totally different than these.
Do you have the numbers presented to us, please?
When I'm finished with the DES, I'll send the numbers to you.
Thank you. Next public comment, please. Is there another one?
Just open, anybody? Yeah, it's public. Peter Shet, 710 Washington Street, Barrington, New Hampshire. There's a house that was owned by a gentleman who passed away. No will, no next of kin. He hasn't paid taxes in 2012. It's been simply out of a payment program going on with the town of Barrington. Now, I know after the end of 36 months, it goes to some kind of a bid process. After the end of the 36 months, supposedly, when I spoke to today with one of the tax collectors, that it's going to go to bid, I guess, when the town acquires it in October. My question is, it's on Long Short Drive, Lot 79. The house is in very disrepair. When the gentleman passed away, I think it was last year or earlier this year, it's like somebody just left. The front door's wide open. It's completely rounded out. You can't even secure it, and it's just a real disrepair. My question is, since there's no power there now, what's it going to be like when October? If the town acquires it in October, when it probably goes to bid, it might be a couple of months, we're looking at the very cold months of the year, how much more damage is going to be on the property? So I called an attorney today to try to find out if it's in probate. If it's in probate, well, then there's something that I can do. You know, we could talk with an next of kin, we could probably acquire it for back taxes or something along those lines. That's not the case at this time. So with the research that I've done, you know, the gentleman died, and it's just going to be acquired by the town. Where does the three-year mark go? I mean, since he didn't pay taxes 2012, 2013, we're talking four, five years now. Do we have to wait till October? Can we put it up to bid now? And if that's the case, I would rather do something now with it before it gets completely to the point where it's not even, it's not even has no interest.
Questions? John, do you have an answer for that?
Yes. And what will happen is in October, the town will take ownership. Normally, once the town takes ownership, we will send a crew out there to board it up. And we normally do not sell it for two further years after that, so we normally wouldn't sell it until two years after that date, and that should clear all possible claims against it. So that's what's, nothing's going to happen in October other than we'll take ownership of it. There's quite a lot of back taxes owed on it, which is why I assume no one came forward to try to save the property out of tax dating. The tax collector, I think, has left. She knew the number. We talked to it earlier.
Yeah, it was $23,000.
Yeah, it's a lot of money owed on that house, the condition it's in. So actually, probably the town will take it, board it up, and then wait two years. That's likely what will happen.
Well, I didn't know. I was trying to get some information on it. All right. Thank you much.
Any other further public comment?
Mr. Walker. My apologies. Yeah, as a fire chief, I'm here tonight, Rick Walker. The, as you know, we're in the process of going up to bid for a new ambulance, and there's a PL custom, which is the ambulance that we, the last three ambulance we had. They have a demo available that is not exactly what we were close. Excuse me. He called me today. It would be available pretty much any time. I actually got it in mail at 5:30, so administrative shooting, these numbers were not exactly correct. It's a 2017 Type III with about 6,500 miles on it. The town can buy it for $178,819. A twin to that ambulance, if we went by that exact spec, so we stayed after the apple, is $190,339. So you're realizing an $11,520 savings.
What were your two numbers again?
$178,819.
Seventy-eight, okay. So that's lower than it was before.
Yeah. And I got that email at 3:30 tonight.
And that new twin would be a 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would be a two-year newer unit because the 18s, there are no 18s available. I saw anything being ordered now is a 19. It's about eight-month lag time. So my question to you is, and that's why I apologize for bringing it up tonight, if you're interested in pursuing this unit, he can bring it down tomorrow. We can take a look at it, see if it will work for us for that 11, five savings. If you're not interested, I'm not going to waste his time to bring it down. I'll just continue with the bid process. So really, that's why I'm here tonight.
Comments on the board? Mr. Eric?
I'm for you to look at it, and if you had any modifications, could you give a rough idea on that?
With the demo, they give you very limited modifications.
No add-ons if you want to do in the future to make it more comfortable where your work is, is that?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not big on making those kind of changes. It's really to look at it and say, yes, it'll work for what we need. It's not exactly what we want. I mean, one thing is, it's a red ambulance, not that's a huge deal, but we've always had a white one, so, and that one of the cabinets in the back is not exactly laid out the way that we probably would, but again, it's about whether you, whether $11,000 is reasonable. I think if you look at this page here, the Kingston PL custom, the 219 new, I put a thing of about $210,000, that's estimated. The reason I say that's an estimated is I talked to the chief today, and they're paying $235,000, and it's put, they're putting a power lift stretcher and a Knox Metavault. The power stretcher's above $25,000. My best guess, the Metavault is above $1,000. So that's where I've come up with the fact that if we bought that ambulance, which I believe the Kingston ambulance is pretty close to, we'd be looking, what were the modifications, that we'd be in the 205, the 210 range going out to bid.
Chairman?
Mr. Diamond, any other questions? May I ask somebody else a chance, please?
So it's my understanding that we've had trouble with the ambulance you currently have, and the reason that the request went out like this to get the pricing without going through the entire RFP process was to consider getting an ambulance for the fire department as quickly as possible. Is that still a necessity right now, Chief?
I'm comfortable in the fact that it went out for repairs again. Thankfully, they covered the repairs 100%, and the warranty, no labor, no nothing. So while we lost the ambulance for another three weeks, it was nice to get it built with S00s on the bottom of it. I was getting a little nervous, but anyway, I'm comfortable that, reasonably comfortable, I'm comfortable that we have a unit that if you chose to go out to bid, that we're, that's okay. You know, we're going to look at January or February by the time we get through the process, or even March to get it. To me, I think fundamentally, the decision you folks need to make tonight is, if you're interested in buying this ambulance, it's, you know, the year doesn't matter to me because we're not going to trade the thing in. So if you're looking at $11,000-plus dollars, if it worked for us, it's really about the savings. It really don't get, be able to buy the ambulance at that price, but if you feel that it makes sense to go up to bid, I'm okay with that, too. I just would encourage it for you if you, if you think it makes sense to buy the demo that you've voted in such a fashion tonight to allow me to negotiate with him, he'll do that, not, yeah, we'll look at it and come back in a few weeks, because he's not going to, he'll hold it for a few days, but, you know, he's not going to hold it forever. We all buy it, somebody else sooner or later will. So it really comes down to whether you're interested in the demo or if you just want to go through the bid process and go new.
I think the approach that we were hoping to take with this was, you know, if in fact we needed an ambulance immediately, and I'm kind of hearing from you that that situation may have changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the case.
And then the other thing is, what is the cost to repaint the ambulance, should you choose to? You'd keep it red?
I wouldn't. I would keep it that color.
You're the fire chief. What would you prefer to do? Take the demo?
Well, the one that we have currently is a demo. The conservative side, and he says anytime I can save money for the town, that's what I'm interested in doing. Honestly, I think that if we went through the bid process, obviously, this ambulance would likely be gone, so it wouldn't be available, so then we would be going with something that's two years newer. This ambulance would be getting is going to have under 7,000 miles on it. I think that going by, you know, going by our bid spec, I think we're going to be a little, the bid for a comparable ambulance will come in at around $200,000. So I think that, you know, 178 versus 200,000, I think that's what you're looking at.
What are we losing the value over two years, though?
About 4%.
Okay. So this is a break even, from what I'm hearing, based on the estimates of, you know, what it will cost, this is a break even. So, okay, that gives me the information I need.
I think we, the other thing is, we would probably, in all honesty, he said 60 days. I said, you know, 30, and he goes, yeah, that's doable. I tell you, I tell you 60. But his company, as he said, I can't apologize, we're eight months out building because we're busy with some other ambulance. But, uh, his company, as he said, I can't apologize, we're eight months out building them because we're busy with some other ambulance.
Mr. John, you have any?
The only question I would have is that I think it's great to bring it down and look at it. And if it's what you want, that's agreeable to me. But I don't want my feet in the fire saying, I brought it, I brought it down, now you've got to take it.
No, he's, uh, one of the, I have to tell you, if I had my choice, I would, I would buy another PL custom. They've been fantastic to work with. Anytime we've had a problem, they've had us, have us have a repair route on there the next day.
Well, 7,000 miles.
Yeah, but I mean, the other day, you know, a few weeks ago, we were, uh, we were in the middle of a transport, and we had a, uh, issue in which, um, we required the services of the local fire department, and the ambulance could come out and help us. And thankfully, the thing wasn't on fire, but, um, it, it burnt up a, a pump. And, uh, when I called him later that day, he was pretty sure he knew what the problem was. The tech was there at 10 o'clock the next morning, made the repairs. For their part of it, the ambulance was back in service by noon time the next day. That's, that's the kind of service that we've come to expect from them.
And that brings up a nice question. Because it's a 2017, is the warranty the same as a 2019 would be?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume that we would have the balance of, uh, factory warranty, which nowadays, most of the time, is five years.
Dan?
Um, I did the Friday break fair last year, and these are real numbers. They had an ambulance there, and, uh, and the specs of it, it was $216,000. So, however you feel comfortable, you realize these are real numbers, over $20,000.
Yep, that's what we have, 218.
So, if, well, you feel comfortable, I'll get, um, a, your direction on the demo.
Again, from my perspective, if, if the thing, no, if the thing fits what the town needs or is close to what we need, I would certainly support saving the taxpayers $20-plus thousand dollars. If we looked at the thing and it really was what we needed, then I would stand in attendance, go up to bid, and let's buy what we need.
Thank you.
My que, my question to you is that a couple of months ago, we talked about the power lift. Now, are we going to take the power lift out of the current one? Or are we going to leave the power lift in the current, current unit that we have, when we, when we put it as, as our backup? And then we're going to be buying a new, a new power lift for this, the new unit?
So, you, you folks approved the new power stretcher, not a power lift?
Yeah.
A power stretcher. A power lift is, you just come up with a stretcher, hit the back of the ambulance, hit a button, the whole thing lifts up. I mean, when you were, uh, that's, that's a $25,000 arm. But you folks approved, um, in February, first a new stretcher, it's at the station. We have, we still have the stretcher that was, uh, that I acquired from the town accident for free. That'll stay in the old ambulance. The new ambulance will get the new stretcher. So, we will have a power stretcher, we'll pay it.
Now, I, we're looking, in reality, for a new one, six to seven months out, with a difference of 4%. And, uh, if they were to bring down the other unit, is there any way that you could have the information as we quit, uh, that was mentioned, but as a request, as to how much the warranty is going to be left or what have you? And my question to you would be, is if we were not to, uh, get the rest of the warranty, or reduce warranty in comparison with the 2019, would you be willing to say no? And then have us go out for bid and turn around and have a new unit?
Yeah, I mean, let me, I'll step outside and see if he'll answer his phone. I'll try calling him and, uh, see if he can answer any questions for me tonight. Try to have an answer for you by this time, public call.
Chief, that'd be wonderful. Do you have anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Any other board members have anything before we go?
That was my same question, George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Saying none, we'll move on to the administrative scrutiny's report.
Does the board approve the request for a proposal for pavement marking to go out as presented? Other, we've got two dates, we have to change the date, so we changed June 25th, which is today, to July 16th, and completed by September 1 to October 1.
September to November, John?
September to October, leave November in there with final completion, but they, the work to be completed, it's suitable weather, but, you know.
Okay.
So, we change September to October and June 25th, July 16th, is that?
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept, and then, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second for the discussion? Seeing as no further discussion, we have a vote. Mr. Air?
Air, aye.
Protocol, aye. Hatch, aye?
Bailey, aye. Motion carries, quarter.
Okay. Actually, we skipped over the minutes. If you want to do the minutes for May 21st and June 25th, uh, then I'll continue with my report.
Sorry about that. Does anybody have any comments on the May 21st?
No, we were double-checking them and had them updated. I know Suzanne did that accurately.
Have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve May 21st meeting minutes.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
Have a second. Anybody object? Motion carries. You have the June 25th.
Motion to accept June 25th meeting minutes.
And I'll second it.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those opposed say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. John, you're up.
Uh, this is not in my report. It is in an email. Andy, uh, being on the tech committee, cannot be here. We have Dave Hallid, who's on the committee here as well. Uh, as you remember, the last time we had the discussion on Office 365, uh, there was some concern that I had expressed that, uh, it does not fully comply with CEGIS compliance, which is a police standard related to the FBI. It appears to be the best we're going to get, short of going to a fairly expensive other alternative. It will improve the situation, making it more secure. And the committee still recommends we proceed, even understanding that, uh, we're unlikely to be able to make a deal with the state at this time, but the state may yet, the state of New Hampshire is holding us up on that. So, uh, the recommendation is to proceed. I'd like a motion to proceed with Office 365. I don't know if David has anything he wants to add.
Dave, I'll back on four hundred, wait. Uh, basically, the biggest issue is, uh, communication between computers here and Office 365, the cloud service. Because the state doesn't have any kind of agreement with Microsoft this time, there's no encrypted communication between the two. That's the only thing holding back the CEGIS compliance. Once that's, once the state signs something like that, then we'll have full CEGIS compliance without a problem.
Any questions from the board?
Should we be waiting for the state to sign off on that? Or do you feel comfortable that it's pending and we know that's going to take place?
Uh, I feel comfortable going forward, uh, just because it's, it's a better solution than the Yahoo, Gmail, AOL accounts that we have now.
Okay.
Um, it also gives us more consistency.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
John?
Uh, motion?
Do I have a motion to, uh, move forward with a CEGIS compliance?
No, with the Office 365.
Oh, the, excuse me, Office 365.
I'll make a motion to purchase the Office 365 and to get an implementation.
I'll second it.
You have a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Bailey, aye?
Hatch, aye?
Protocol, aye?
Air, aye.
Quarter, oh, thank you, okay.
Um, Swain Road, and I think a number of people hear about Swain Road. The engineer has had a review of, um, of Swain Road and came up with a number of cost, um, estimates based upon differing things being done. If you upgraded it to gravel for the town standards, from where the Class V portion ends to the last residence, it's $524,000. You upgrade to the town paved standard to the last residence is $658,000. If you upgrade merely as far as the town forest to gravel standards, it's $420,000. If you upgrade to the town forest to paved standard, it's $530,000. Um, the argument that was presented when this came before the board, April 9th, I believe, was the last time that the board, um, has discussed this. There was concern by the residents down there that they are doing the maintenance on the road, but that the town forest is on that road, and the town encourages the public to use it going down to the town forest. And, uh, I guess, any of those numbers is going to require a vote at town meeting in order to come up with the money. And, but I'm, I wanted to know what the intent of the board is and what the board would like to do.
Comments from the board, please?
John, if I understand this, there's 11 homes affected by this. If we went ahead with the recommended work, it would cost about $47,000 per home to upgrade the work, the roadway?
Um, yes.
And I'm assuming that the average taxes that we collect on each of those homes is somewhere between maybe $4,000 and $8,000?
Could be up to 10, I'm not sure, but in that range.
Basically, over a period of about a decade before we really have offset with taxes any of the amount that's spent, is what I'm projecting.
Any other comments? John?
Uh, I, I didn't know which way the board wanted to go. The board has basically, um, has several options that it can consider. And, um, if I could, if I could go over what those options are. Uh, the first option is to do nothing, to leave the situation as it is. It obviously would not be the option which the residents down there would prefer, but it's the least expensive for the rest of the taxpayers in town, and that would be to do nothing. The second option would be to improve the road, one of those four options. And it could be done in several different ways. It could be done via, um, the town going with a warrant article to fund it, and then the town as a whole paying for it. It could be done through a betterment assessment in which the properties on that road, including the town, paid their share over the next 10 years, uh, towards the cost of that improvement. It would be added to the tax bill as what's called a betterment assessment. The third, uh, option would be what's known as an emergency lane. And that is to improve it for the purpose of making sure emergency vehicles can safely travel it. Uh, the, uh, this would require a vote by the board of selectmen. It would not require town meeting approval to the extent that the improvements could be made within the existing, uh, budget limitations that we have. So, uh, the, nothing, town pay for it, betterment assessment, uh, emergency lane, are basically the, um, the four, um, yeah, are the four options that are out there for the board to consider.
John, one quick question. Have we done any study at all to gather how many actual cars are parking there for a road?
No, um, I've seen pictures from the residents down there of school bus in there, of, uh, it, it is used. I don't know the extent to which it's used. I know the Boy Scouts have upgraded the trails and done work out there. Um, it is a recreation area that has parking, which is better than some of the other areas we have in town, which don't have parking.
Right.
Um, my guess is that, uh, the road is a fairly low-volume road, uh, to begin with, with only 11 homes on in terms, in terms of trips. And that you might be looking at four to eight trips some days, and maybe a dozen trips another day that relate to the forest. It's just a guess.
Yeah. Does the betterment assessment get divided amongst the 11 homes percentage-wise? In other words, do you take their current taxes, figure out what percent they're responsible for, and then apply it? Or do you equally divide the $11,000, expecting each homeowner to cover almost $5,000 in additional taxes over 10 years?
Or do you do it on frontage? There's a number of ways.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I'm asking. What has been the approach with the betterment assessment?
I don't know what the history in Barrington is. Um, it, it is one of the things that need to be worked out in negotiation with everyone down there as you proceed as to how best to apportion the cost fairly between everyone that's there. Um, if the values of all the homes were similar, the fringes were similar, then it would be divided, you know, equally. If, on the other hand, um, there was an apartment down there with four units in it, and, you know, they contributed a lot more to the traffic than somebody else, then, uh, you know, that might be a factor. Frontage, if someone had enough frontage so they could subdivide off three more lots, um, in the future, that would be taken into account normally when you do how you divide up the, the money. And then you have different rates normally for undeveloped lots versus developed lots.
Okay.
So, there's, it's not an easy answer, but other things being equal, an equal division would work.
Any other questions? John, I have a question. I was poking around the RSAs a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed, uh, one of the RSAs caught my attention. And the attention it caught was the fact that because of the forest being down the other end and me, and, uh, here's educational reasons, there was a, a little blurb about who was responsible for, uh, upgrading that road. And I have to apologize not only to the board members, but to everybody sitting out here.
Can you, uh, speak up a little bit? Can you speak up or end the mic?
I thought I was doing that. Well, I guess we can try it again. I apologize because I had a RSA that I was poking around in it. And as I said earlier, talked about, uh, a recreational area down the other end of the road, and I know that, uh, town forest is there. I had that set aside to come out here tonight for, uh, discussion, and John, I, I forgot. And, uh, if I didn't, can't find it. So, I would like to, uh, maybe have a little bit more time to discuss, uh, who pays for on this road here, because I seem to, uh, have different thoughts than everybody else here has had, and, uh, I'd just like to go that way.
Chairperson Bailey, can we take public comment for the sake of being?
Oh, yes, I will, I will do that.
Okay. Even if we table the issue tonight, because people have come out, I really would like to hear.
Well, I, I will, I will. I'm just asking to, uh, put the vote down the other side, because I think that, uh, you might be surprised. You have a question, Mr. Air?
Yes, by town vote, conservation controls town forest, so.
I, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Okay. If you build it, they will come. They do have a legitimate concern, and we should look into it, is all I say.
Will you do that, John? And I will turn around and, uh, when I get home, and I'll get back to you on Wednesday. I have other appointments in the morning.
Yeah.
All right.
But, but I assume that, that you're going to have the public speak, and one of them may be aware of that statute or something.
That would be fantastic. That'd act a bit like a hero again, but anyway, I doubt that's going to happen. I'd like to open this up for public comment. Remember that, uh, we have a three-minute limit. When you step forward, please give your name and your address. We'd go from there. Who would like to be first, please?
Um, I, uh,
Excuse me, name and address, please.
Um, Josh Carloni, Swain Road, 264. Um, so, I, I like the discussion that you guys are having today. I just want to reiterate, when we came to public comment with this initially, we requested that the town take over, we wanted to keep it gravel, and we requested that the town take over maintenance of the road. I realize that when you go out to bid, um, you, you have to get several different bids. Our request was not to bring it up to paved standards. And then, secondly, um, I don't think that the betterment would work for the, the citizens of that road. It's a burden upon So I don't think that that would be something that people on the road would be agreeable to. So if that helps your decision in this matter, I think taxes are already pretty high in Barrington, and to expect that out of the citizens of the road, I think is just a little too much, so.
Josh, thank you for your comments. Anybody else have comments, please? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Board members, anybody disagree with me to move this to the next meeting so I could research the mistake that I didn't take care of?
So as I'm understanding it, Chair Bailey, you're saying that you've had some type of state statute that does what? You assume it does what?
The state statute says that at the end of a particular road like we're talking about here at Swains Lake, is that if the town or entity of the town has a recreational or a conservation that's used by the public, and then it's the responsibility of the owner of that particular entity at the end of the road to maintain the road.
Has anyone found that in their research, so we know what RSA?
Yeah. So as I say, I'm going to work with John, and I will get back to John on Wednesday and go from there. Does anybody object to bringing this up to the next month?
No, if that exists, I think it's very important.
But I find that...
Yeah, I think it's very important we run it by our legal department and that we're able to give these people an answer as soon as possible.
I agree 100%. And I apologize to everybody that's involved here that I didn't have it, but it just didn't work.
I would note that a lawyer, when asked, did not bring that up, but that's something you may have found that they overlooked.
There's always that chance.
There's always that chance.
I doubt it wouldn't have been, but I'll report it here.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move this, to table this until the...
It's just easier if we move it without tabling, because then we don't have to move timetable and everything else.
Move this to what, the 16th?
16th to July.
To July.
Seeing none, any objections? Seeing none, we'll move this to the 16th.
John, could you also present at that time, if we are required legally to bring it up to, can we also have information on how the betterment would get divided? It will help us make a better decision.
Yep. The next item that I wanted to bring up, I think, is the alternates for the Recreation Commission. Doug Langdon and Dale Sylvia have been recommended by the Recreation Commission, and I wanted to know if the board would want to vote to appoint them as alternates to the, and then we need a term, one, two, or three years.
If they are satisfied with it, they're going to be working with them, and I support their opinion and input.
Looking at this here, we would ask that if we did, my first question is to the board members, is there any reason to have a non-public discussion on these two individuals? Mr. Air?
No, I don't.
Okay, fine. Then I would recommend that we have a motion to approve these two individuals.
Can we ask Tara for the...
With, excuse me, excuse me, with stipulation that Mr. Langdon completes Section 2 and 3 for his appointment and submit it to the recommission, and they get it back to us. Now, you have something you want to add?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. Can we ask Tara what she prefers for one, two, or three years on the alternate serving based on the commission makeup?
We are strategic.
It's so nice to have all that help, isn't it?
We would like to request for Dale to be one year and Doug to be three.
Thank you very much. So anybody in the board object to those numbers?
No, I'd make a motion to accept the alternates, Doug for three years and Dale for one year.
And I'll second.
Can you do so? Done now. Bailey, aye?
Hatch, aye.
Cardac, aye.
Air, aye.
For the board, thank you very much. John, do you have anything else?
Just a second. It's tough, we're into that. The town seal. The town, the board asked me to come up with a plan for the, for the town, a policy for the town seal, and I took a draft at it, and I wanted to know what the board thinks. The draft of seal policies at the end of my report, page four, which are all vehicles that are purchased or leased from this date forward, have the town seal decal affixed promptly to the front doors unless waived in writing by the select board, for example, an unmanned cruiser or construction vehicle for which doors are not the best location. Number two, it's allowed and recommended that vehicles that are not owned by the town but that are regularly doing town business, for example, the town contract assessor or when the building inspection vehicle is out of service, have magnetic town seals or other identifying information attached. By way of information, the contract assessors have a assessing decal with houses on it to indicate that they are assessors when they go out, but we could ask them to put the town seal on. One of them does have the town seal. Number three, the recommended size shall normally be 10 inches in diameter unless the board improves in writing a different size as part of a design scheme. Currently, the police badge, which is where the seal appears on the police vehicle, is very, the seal is quite small in that one. And then four, it shall be a violation for use of the town seal on a vehicle that is not owned by the town or meet the criteria of number two above, punishable or fine up to legal limits allowed.
Comments from the board?
Ladies first.
I did some research, John, after reading this, because I think part of our intent with this was to do a couple of things. I thought our purpose was to create vehicle graphics that created some uniformity with the town and make the vehicles easily identifiable, but that the other purpose was for the protection of our town employees and contracted employees so that they also could be easily identifiable to townspeople, keeping them safe as they entered private property and things like that. So I took a stab and found a variety of municipal vehicle graphics policies, and I'm hoping to pass this out and that you might consider taking it a little bit further, reading through this, and coming up with another potential draft of this policy. For a couple of reasons, I thought that we should say emergency vehicles and apparatus used by EMS and fire departments should display appropriate industry graphics. I thought that the police vehicles in town should, again, also display appropriate industry graphics, that there should be a process in place that when we hand out the magnetic seals, that we are accounting for taking those back at the end of the day, because, again, I personally, as a homeowner, don't want people on my property that are identifying who they are each time. And then I also found some very interesting information about town-owned vehicles and not putting additional stickers, signs, or flags other than for, and it lists in here the various reasons you might do that. And then finally, I found a component for graphics policy or transfer of vehicle ownership from municipalities that actually requires that the identification be removed prior to the sale to a private citizen. So blah, 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 has a lot of information to read over, but I think it could add value to the policy.
Okay, now Tracy has come forward with a list of proposals to be added to and to update the town draft vehicle seal policy. Let's take comments. Mr. Air?
I mean, I respect her extra efforts and stuff. I need more time to review this. I don't want to make decisions tonight. She took her time.
That's a good statement.
I actually think the information should go to John. John should see if he thinks there's any value to it and potentially provide an updated policy.
The way we go, we're going to be there in July until midnight, so.
This may be an August policy.
August, so the board says outside the burden signal, we have some other items that are more important. Would that be acceptable to the board members?
I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Air?
Yes.
There you go. You have four, we'll show them each two August. What else you have, John, please?
One thing that will happen before August is some of the departments are going to be ordering uniforms, and it's a little unclear after the discussion on the highway department. The motion said that they would have two seals, the highway would, the town seal on the front and the highway seal on the back, was the way the motion was worded.
I don't think we were calling it a seal on the back. I think we were calling it a graphic.
Okay, the graphic on the back.
So I think the town seal should go on the front and identify them to everyone they encounter, but I absolutely love the enthusiasm, and I think the graphic really reflects the work that's done, so I think the purpose was to allow them, in any size, to put that on the back of the T-shirt.
Now, normally, the fire department, Rick, you have a, what is it? The fire symbol is usually on the front of the fire department vehicles, I mean, uniforms. So was that town seal supposed to go on the front of fire uniforms from now on?
I think that's industry standard.
Industry, and same with police.
Industry standard.
What about recreation? Recreation is going to be...
Is there an industry standard for recreation?
I don't think so. Maybe Tara can speak to what they normally do.
Thank you. I have actually a really good example, by chance. This is the rec department's logo here, and this is normally what you would see, this shirt, colored shirt, myself, the assistant director, anybody who works in the office or isn't necessarily working summer camp or track or field or whatever it may be, that those seasonal staff members typically have a blue and red T-shirt here with this on the front as well, and on the back it usually says "staff," so it's easily identifiable to our participants and parents so that when we're out in the public, they know who's a staff member, because some of our staff are a little bit young, they look young, so we like to have...
Peter, would you prefer that the graphic that was designed be on the front of the T-shirts as well? Is that, you'd prefer there isn't a town seal?
We've got to move me.
No, I know that, but it didn't come before the select board, which became the problem, so we're trying to address it in retrospect.
No, I want to see, see this is the Peter Cook policy. I see a lot of them coming up lately. I think if one department has to do it, everybody should have to do it. That's the way I feel about it.
I'm wondering, Peter, do you think that it's appropriated in the graphics policy?
I mean, if you can see it.
I think it's terrific. I'm saying, do you think that we should build into the graphics policy that when new graphics are introduced for each department, that they're just simply brought forward? Is that something that would satisfy everyone, both on the board and in each of the departments, John?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. We probably ought to finish with highway and whether or not they now need to make that change, but as far as the rest go, what fire, police, and rec have been doing, they can continue doing, is what I believe is what you're saying.
I think we need to stick with industry standards when we're talking about public safety.
Yeah, I think industry should do that. Dan?
I can see the vehicles have a seal, whatever, with a uniform over time, but each department, I don't have a problem, because that sure identifies who he is.
Great.
That one identifies who she is.
I agree.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So going forward, it's okay for the highway to have that graphic? Now, the board will approve, there'll be a motion to approve that graphic for highway?
I'm very comfortable making that motion.
But then that has to identify each...
Excuse me, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second and a discussion on that. Dan, now you may have your discussion.
No, I don't, I don't have a problem. I can identify that, I can make that out who he is, I can make out who she is.
Okay, so if, so we have a motion on the, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Just a question, where's the seal going to go?
On the vehicles.
Yeah, on the vehicles.
Okay. So he doesn't have to have it on his shirt?
Yeah.
Okay. That was just my question.
So right now, we have...
Is there any further? Okay, let me get a vote here that you can go. If we have any further discussion, seeing none, we'll have a vote. Mr. Air?
Air, aye.
Cardac, aye.
Hatch, aye.
Bailey, aye. Motion carries for an O. John, do you have a question?
I'm just clarifying, so the current rec seal can use the current fire, the current police, the current highway, all are...
And the building department.
Well, the building does use the town seal, right? John, John was here.
We don't want to leave them out.
Yeah, he's here.
Right.
If I come up with a new design and come to you for it, that's how it works.
Yes, please, sir.
It needs to identify that department.
Can we have a comment, please?
Sure.
Okay.
John, are you doing new, old business?
I'm doing my report, but some of them are listed.
That's fine with me, then I could just go and deal with it, please.
Okay. Yeah, we're done with old business. My report covered the old business, too.
Except for the...
The RFP for the police department. The RFP for the police.
RFP for the police.
Okay, we prepared an RFP. Bob did the changes that he wanted in there. Is it okay to send that RFP out?
Plays the board, we have a motion to allow this to go out. We have a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, have a vote, Mr. Air?
Air, aye.
Cardac, aye.
Hatch, aye.
Bailey, aye. Motion carries for all.
And we're going to put salary discussions off until July, so Andy can be here and we'll have a full board.
That's right.
Okay, I think that's everything that I had from my report.
You have one other, you have the other part here.
Yeah, I have a list of things to sign that I've handed out to the board. There's, we've earned them, it will include the minutes, the DRA questionnaire regarding the need for the PS-28. We don't really, we haven't used it for years. Payment manifest, tarot manifest.
Excuse me, I'm just...
You won't be signing the purchase and sales for MAP 224 lot 60 because that is the one that Peter Froschette just withdrew from, but there is a purchase and sales for 224 and the various lots, property tax abatement, two of those, two yield warrants intent to cut, and D tentative upon payment for Dan Air, and then the appointment sheets for Dale and Doug for signature.
What minutes were approved? Seal policy, that's it. Thank you. Well, we're at a point right now where we're under old business. Old business was taken care of. Any other old business the board wants?
It's just concerns, Joe.
Pardon?
Concerns.
That's down here under reports and concerns, afternoon business.
I'm getting them. Okay. Don't forget.
Yep, and the next public comment is in the bottom.
Deal.
I appreciate all the help I can get, because sometimes I need it, because of use of the staff. All right, seeing none, other business, we have Recreation Commission appointments. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Tara?
I think they're ready to have a comment.
Thank you. We have the two... Uh, we have the, the budget policy was changed to next meeting. Any other business under, under new business? See, now we go to select persons' report, concerns. Dan?
Um, second to air. Um, Townwood Land Commanding didn't meet or look at the town farm road, and A.J. Dubre is a volunteer for the town, so he helped us out. Um, conservation, John Walsh explained most of the help that they gave me tonight, so I gotta thank him for that, all the issues that go on. And, um, concerns, I get a couple calls, they told people to show up here, I asked for information. Sorry, guys, so big, I was retired this weekend, about the playground. And only I took the, I popped the public comment, and then I looked at what I had, so I saw the estimate, and that's why I looked at it. I saw some concerns about the playground, that I have been addressed, what's ongoing, so I left the rect phone up to the public, 'cause two people didn't show up tonight. Thank you.
Who are those two people, please?
I don't know, I can't say.
You have to say it, now you brought them up here in public. You need to turn around and say that they had a concern or a statement by bringing it up here. You're required to come forward and give us the names.
It's not in writing.
It's in the RSA's for it to be there, and I don't have it with me also.
It's gotta be in writing, but it's verbal.
Then if it's supposed to be in writing and verbal, why did you turn around and feel it was necessary for you to act on, on that information with the playground?
Because I ran on the people's voice.
I haven't finished, I'll give you a chance. After you and I had a discussion, I asked you not to bring it up, and then I prefaced it by telling you that I can't tell you what to do and what not to do, I can only ask you not to bring it forward, and you chose to bring it forward, and consequently, it caused quite a stir, and I, I think that what you did was totally incorrect, and I think that you need to consider what you're doing, and if, if you don't want to reconsider it, there are other things that I would ask you to consider, but only after the comments are there. Do you have to make, would you have any comments that you would like to make on the emails that you received?
You wanna call out my email?
Yeah, do you, the comments that you received, do you wanna comment on those?
Right, well, when, when this whole playground came up...
Yeah.
They said there are things that were gonna be addressed. I had information with DuBois and King, and then I had public input, and I looked at it, and I didn't see it, and I just asked for the information, so I went to a meet the bus to do it, and I am wrong, I did not put, do not reply, so I didn't really reply to them, I wouldn't mind making a change, I addressed it to you, and John Schuenger replied. To break the chain.
I would like to bring it up, and I'd ask Tara to verify it back. Under Mr. O'Brien's chairmanship, it was brought up in the beginning, we started talking about this playground, and the playground was brought up as to what Mr. Cook and his department was going to do. I had concerns that on some of the items that was being asked of Mr. Cook to turn around and perform, would turn around and negate some of the, or I had fears, not the town, but I had fears as a select person, that with Mr. Cook installing it, it would turn around and possibly put us in a condition if we had somebody hurt, that it would be the town's responsibility, because they bought the material and they installed. So working with Tara here at this meeting, it was agreed that Peter was going to put in the drainage system that was necessary, which is very vague to do, and that we were going to, Tara was going to work with the seller and the installer to have them do the work properly, so as to take one nix away from the lawyers on it. But with that being said, there was just so much that was being said by yourself that indicated that, one, that I was backing you on it, which I was not, and secondly, there was comments made on the cost. One of the questions I had, and I put it to John, I says, "Well, how much is this going to cost?" At the time, I believe you said, Tara is the one I'm referring to, said fifteen thousand, or it could've been twenty, but I know it was in that same neighborhood. And then I recall asking John what it's going to cost, and he, for him to find out. So that is the reason why they went to DuBois, to turn around and get that other figure, and some of the things that DuBois put on here are some of the things that the rec department had not required. I, I feel that balance is overstepped. I mean, things that under her control, the fiber servicing, fiber servicing, it's a special fiber servicing that's requested by ASTM. Thank you. ASTM to turn around and say what it is, and that part was necessary. I just think that, Dan, you caused so much trouble here. I think you need to make amends, and that's not acceptable. I would ask that, that's as far as I'm gonna go right now. Do you have any comments on what I said? Does anybody else like to make comments on what, on Dan's emails, or how they were affected by Dan's emails? If you do, please step forward to the podium.
Well, I for one didn't hear a thing about it, so I guess I, well, I'm not very good. I did not hear a thing about it from anyone other than you and Dan.
Our responsibility as a select board is to act collectively, and our responsibility is to be as transparent with the people of this town as possible. And I know that we have agreed that if we have questions for department heads, we will bring them directly to the town administrator, and that applies to all departments. I think that a tremendous waste of time and potential bad energy takes place with department heads when any individual member begins to question the actions of a department, and I would caution us to do the best job possible in supporting our department heads, and should we have questions or concerns, continue to bring them to the town administrator and let that communication take place.
The other comment I will make is that the rec department issued a statement that the playground was almost completed, and they were coping off, taping off the playground area on Friday, so a lot of the concrete to set, and they asked that nobody else used it, and then when that was done, the, the next thing that came out was, "The playground was completed," and they're waiting to install the fall materials, by that, I mean, the chips on Monday at 7:30, and that's when it's gonna be started, so, I mean, there was nothing saying it was open for the public to be used. That's the last comment I have. Does anybody else on board want to make a comment? Mr. Air, would you like to reply?
No.
Mr. Air does not want to reply, the director showed that he doesn't.
Sure, David, could we ask for an update from the rec department though, in public?
Yes, we can. I will make a note of that, and I'm sure that anything of that, Ranger, would, hopefully she would have it in her back pocket and give to us. Selectmen, hot cup, you have an update and concerns?
I was not at the meeting, it was the night of our storm, and I was traveling to a meeting late, and a tree was in the way, and then we lost electricity, and I was helping pump my basement out, so I think Tara can give us a quick update later on in the meeting.
Good thing we didn't have homework we had to do.
I'm sorry.
The dog ate it.
You know, here we go, talk about closing things, and I think the next one will be... John, yes, please?
We had, we, the zoning board met, we continued the hearing for additional information, the other one was passed, and one was withdrawn.
It was continued. Two.
Two were continued, oh, even continued that, okay, it's two continued, one passed. I was there, just, was not there?
I had a library, commissions meeting that I attended, and I had, I finally asked for, myself at fault, I asked for it, and I finally received it. It was kind of an update of what has been happening with the library, and for the month of May, they have, had 27 new patrons. They had 4176 patrons come in, and they had 49, 4,025 items checked out, and they were 757 overdue books and ebooks, and there was 163 hoopla users, that's TV, music, movies, music, and what have you. The summer reading program is underway, so if you haven't signed up for it, it's a good idea to look into it, it's a program that really has a lot of fun for some of the younger people to go there, and also for the adults, or as some adults that would like some assistance on reading, and they can also go. And friends of the library, there was a thank you that came out from the library commission to friends of the library for the plant sale, and this year was extremely successful, and we want to thank all the individuals in the community that worked with them to make this possible. Next on the agenda is the last public comment. Is there a public comment, please? Chief Walker?
So, you know, I'd like you to stay up. The, so I got ahold of Mr. Moore, and the warranty begins, it's three-year bumper-to-bumper, and it begins upon delivery, less than mileage, so it's normally three years at 36,000 miles for us, it'll be, if you purchase that, able to be three years above 30,000 miles.
So he'll give us the same warranty that he would if we purchased a brand new one?
Yes.
Does, does it affect the engine warranty or any manufacturer warranty from the chassis maker?
That's what he was talking about, that was the chassis warranty.
That was the chassis, okay.
Yep.
Okay, is, is there anybody that would like to make a motion to reopen?
Motion to reopen.
All right, I'll second that. Over for discussion? A was open, is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to allow the fire chief to spend up to $179,000 for the... Go ahead, John.
Point of order, you should vote on the motion to reopen, and then that motion.
All right, vote, reopen. Mr. Air?
Air aye.
Mr. Hurdle cop?
Hurdle cop aye?
Hatch aye.
Fairly aye, open. Now, you have a motion.
Like to make a motion to allow the chief to spend up to $179,000, saving us 15% on the purchase of the demo ambulance, should he choose to find this meets the needs of the department.
So moved, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Have a vote, Mr. Air?
Air aye.
Hurdle cop aye?
Hatch aye.
Fairly aye?
Thank you.
Chief, you're gonna get some 4, 4-0, none?
When's the next meeting?
Sixteenth of July.
July 2nd, is that somewhere at the town hall? We're not gonna have that? Instead of a comment, is there an email?
No, we, we voted to go once in July, once in August.
I thought I saw an email somewhere July 2nd at the town hall.
Oh, that's, the library trustees have some questions, and I was gonna sit down, then George asked to be there, but I'm making the rest of the board aware of it.
All right.
It's not a selectman's meeting. Uh, who seconded that?
George.
George did.
George, thank you.
I am somebody.
John, you're doing a very good job to dual-rolling tonight.
The, the other, the other question I would have, but I think I should be also, I was gonna ask about approving the purchase of radios out of the radio revolving account, put in that, but because we're gonna meet the 16th, I should be all right for that. So one last quick thing, I'm just gonna give my opinion on the town seal policy. I use a town seal on my vehicles, so I think I'm in a pretty good position to form an opinion and not say that my opinion's based on, I don't wanna use them. But that being said, I don't think it's the town seal that makes the vehicle stick out when it's got fire department spread down the side, or the police department spread down the side of it, or in the case of the highway department, highway department spread down the side of it, it's pretty obvious where the vehicle comes from, and my personal opinion is that you should perhaps develop a policy that encourages the use of the town seal, but you should leave it up to the department heads to decide, even if they would bring it forward to you folks for approval, like, you know, that's okay. But I, I just think that, you know, I think we wasted a lot of time, we spun our wheels just because somebody didn't like a seal on the, on the highway department vehicles, and I think that's unfortunate, and I think they came forward with and put something on their vehicles, and that's my personal opinion. I like the town seal, they're on the fire trucks, and I think that if, as you said tonight, industry standard, there's probably industry standards out there that show highway departments have their own seals, too, so I think I would develop a policy that says, perhaps, get more of a selectman approval before they put it on the vehicle, encourage use of the seal in the design, but I, I think I would strongly encourage you to maybe rethink that town seal policy and leave it up to the individual companies, and that's a personal opinion.
Thank you for your comments. Any other personal comments? Please.
Steve Brave, Secory Lane, just to echo what the chief just came down with, with the, with the seal, also keep in mind the implications of those departments that have, people that have personal vehicles that drive them as part of official business, is that something you guys are gonna require, that they have it on their personal vehicle?
I believe there was a magnetic sticker involved in that.
And all this covers the cost for it, that kind of thing, it's just, just something you may wanna keep in mind.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Daniel, they, they're called Conde Grand Vibe, 66 Gasorah. Since the bid was rejected at Gasorah, what's the board gonna do with it? Are they gonna put it back on the bid, or are they gonna leave it alone?
That'll be in discussion for another time. We haven't decided what we're gonna do with it.
Is he gonna do the second bidder? Back bidder?
Hasn't been decided yet. I can only, I'm only one individual. I'll ask John to put it on the meeting for the next meeting on July, John, and we'll talk about acceptance of going to the next bidder. They'll take care of that.
Is it closing, it's up to 27?
And for, and after that one, even one, that one, we're not closing, it's for...
Thank you, comments?
Yes.
Is there any other comments out there for the public? Please? State your name and department you represent, please. That's a legal issue.
I'm Tara Barker, and I am the head of the recreation department. And just here to give you a playground project update, as well as our last meeting update. We'll start with the meeting update, since it's gonna be a little bit shorter. At the last rec department meeting, where the rec commission meets, we discussed two real kind of hot topics, so to speak. Green Play, which is our strategic plan and needs assessment, is still moving along as scheduled. We are on track to have the survey go out to our general public by July 4th. Our goal is for it to hit households between next week and this week, and the very beginning of next week. The survey draft has been completed by Green Play, they have passed it on to me, I have passed that information on to the recreation commission members, and they are reviewing it currently. I will be looking through those emails tomorrow, gathering those comments, and sending them to Green Play on Wednesday at 1 o'clock. I will have a phone conference, as I normally do with Green Play, to firm up those comments and give them the go-ahead to start completing the final draft, in which the rec commission will also be receiving that before we send it out to get their final, not approval, but just to make sure we have everything and all the facts in place. The second thing we did, or one of the items that we covered, was the budget review. We start our budget review next month on the 16th of July, not at this meeting, but at our own meeting at 6 o'clock. Sorry, Tracy, sorry.
Won't see you.
I'm so sorry. Just happens to be we at the same meeting this next month. But you will get updated, it won't be the last time we look at it, so do not worry. And you'll get it a week ahead of time, so any comments, concerns? So, just to kind of give you a quick overview of what that is. And that is a project that has started back in February, I believe, and will be completed in October or November, or that's the deadline for ourselves, I know. Okay. So, next, the playground. So, the good news is that we completed the playground today. So, we started last month, well, we actually started like two weeks ago. The highway department has been, oh, lightsaber, instrumental. Without them, a lot of this really would not have happened, so thank you. So, we completed the project today. The mulch has been, or the safety servicing has been placed down. We finished at 6:15 tonight. They loaded their trucks about the time this meeting started, and they're out of here. So, the install went well. We had a few snags that came up last week, as far as the monsoon that we had on Monday. So, we ended up leaving the current safety, or the previous safety servicing down in order to avoid a lot of the muddy mess that would have been created if we were working on dirt. But those were easily overcome, and it went really well. The concrete was poured on Friday. Like I said, they, we finished laying down the safety servicing today. We have a little bit of work to do, 6:00 AM tomorrow morning, but we foresee this opening tomorrow, as we would open summer camp at probably 7:30, 8 o'clock or so. Just to give you a little bit more insight, the rec. commissions, they had requested, and heard the general public ask for us to save a few special pieces, which we were successfully able to save the Caleb Country Store. We did move that to the outside perimeter of the playground, so it's not in the fall zones. So, we are within regulation and guidelines, and that will be hopefully used as a pavilion. I am meeting with the town inspector, buildings inspector tomorrow, just to double-check the integrity of that building, to make sure that that is safe to use. The fencing that was currently around the building with the donors' names, those were set aside, and they were completely refurbished by our maintenance staff, and so they were run through planners. They do look brand-new. They are not brand-new. They are the originals that were put up. They have been stained in the same color that the conservation commission utilizes on their signs to kind of give that uniform look. Even though we're two different departments or two different pieces of the puzzle, we still kind of work together. And the paintings were removed, and we are hoping to have them re-renovated in some sense. Those are definitely a little bit more challenging, since individuals painted those in the community. We will be reaching out to them and seeing, you know, if there's anything we can do, if they can be reused. Within the fencing, so I think the overall plan is to reuse the fencing that we have refurbished, and to also reuse those paintings as part of that fence. A thought that I had, and I know I mentioned at the rec. commission meeting last month, or no, this month, was if we can't use those paintings in the fencing itself down the playground, maybe we can reuse them within the town gym itself. I know we have a refurbishing or refinishing, or planning on refinishing the gym floor, and doing some work to the walls, and repainting, and that sort of thing, and maybe hanging them on the upper walls. That way, they're preserved, and we'll have them, rather than just getting rid of them. The stone, the stone pavers and walkway, those were preserved, or they weren't preserved, they were left in place. And as of this afternoon, there was only one stone that needed to be put back in the ground. I'm not quite sure where it came from, but we'll find the space, or we'll make a new one. The parking lot access road, infringed rain, that will be done in the late summer, early fall, to avoid having more heavy equipment down there during summer camp time, which is eight weeks starting today. So, just to, our campers use that area a lot. We've seen rain come down through there. We know how to manage that a little bit better than what we did, you know, eight years ago. So, we're going to try to get by through the summer. I know that the highway department did do some grading in that area today, just to help it out a little bit. It was a little bit muddy. The staff, they spoke about it today, this morning, about not bringing the kids through the mud, at least letting that area drive up, and they were very respectful of that. So, the, again, the parking lot, the access road of the French drain will be done in the late summer, early fall. We feel like the project has been well-received by the public, with, you know, we've been trying to be pretty regular about updating. We did a mid-week post last week, so we did a Facebook post, and we received astronomical amounts of comments through the week, as well as, I think, I did a post on Friday night. Again, an astronomical amount of positive posts. Did have a couple people reach out to me through Messenger, which is fantastic, with some comments and suggestions, and we definitely appreciate those, and will take those into consideration as well. I think that's all I have on that project. Any questions?
Questions going forward?
No, I just ask when you do publish that it's open, make it very clear that it's got universal design, that's ADA compliant, for kids that would like to be able to use the equipment.
Yes. Yep, that was one of the reasons why we chose this company to work with, was because it offered the most ADA-compliant equipment, so.
I think it'd be great to let the public know.
Any other comments, Mr. Air?
Thank you. That should answer anyone's concerns.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Besides Sam.
George. George, come on, we always let you have public comments.
Oh, yeah, I'm the only one there.
Just a point of clarification, so Mr. Frichette withdrew his bid, is that correct?
John?
Yes.
Okay. So, and then to Dan's point, the next step for the board is to figure out what to do with that property now.
What to do with, what to do with the second bid.
With the second bid?
Yes, the second bid that we're going to discuss later.
Gotcha.
No, I said, whole project. Are you going to even sell it? Are you going to go out to bid again, or are you going to go to the second bid? You've got three options.
I think it's very, and I'm just making an observation here, so don't take it any way, but I think it's very interesting that in the same meeting, we have a discussion on one person being able, having to effectively bring the road up to standard and spend a lot of money themselves, and then we also have another case where there's townspeople that are looking to have the existing road they live on become a town road as well.
One is a private road, and the other's owned by the town.
Oh, the other one is?
Yes.
I did not realize, okay.
Except the actuals.
Gotcha. Excellent clarification.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, please?
Hi, Jolene Galant, Castle Rock Road. I do have a question about that, because why are, why are residents that live on the public road, why are they maintaining that road themselves? I don't understand.
It's a private road.
No, Castle Rock is a private road. We maintain that ourselves. But the other road with town forests is Swain Road, I think. If that's a public road, why are the, why are the residents maintaining it?
I don't have it, it's, but maybe John does.
There are two types of the public-owned right-of-way for roads. One is considered a class five, which the town maintains. The other is a class six, which the town does not maintain. There are several ways in which a road becomes a class six road. Most common was after the depression, a lot of roads were just abandoned and stopped being maintained. And if they weren't maintained for a certain number of years, they became class six. Sometimes, and I know Farmington did this to a road I own property on, they vote to put a road into class six, so they won't have to maintain it, because there are no residents on it, or very few residents. What has happened over time is that when people come and stop buying on a class six road and building, there is an agreement they sign saying they will maintain the road. The situation on this one is the town has property that is used for recreation, and people readily go down there, and they're saying, "Well, you have, we may have signed saying we maintain the road, but it's not fair." At this point, the town can take it over and stop maintaining it.
Because when they purchased it, there wasn't a town recreation area at the end.
There probably was, yes.
So, when they purchased their homes, see a lot of homes have been built since that town forest was put in, and the traffic...
I don't know about all of them. I would say some of them definitely. I don't have many.
That's really not my concern. My concern is, all of a sudden, I keep seeing this, we have a $1.3 million improvement that's needed on Castle Rock as a resident. I don't ever want to hear that you want to raise my taxes for that, because, well, I know Chris lives up there, but I don't, and that road's been maintained by us, and it really made me nervous that it was like, I know that it's public and private and all that, but I don't ever want it to get to the point that because an improvement needs to be made, although we have, what, three or four houses past that, that shouldn't become, because your rules have changed, it shouldn't become a burden on us being here for 30 years.
Most common for that betterment assessment to occur is when the residents band together and want it done.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, we just make it over that. Wait, or I put it in the minutes? It'll be on the record.
Thank you for the comments, please. Is there any other public comment? Excuse me. Please. Is there any other public comments? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment session. Mr. Air?
Can I address a comment to town administrator?
On what?
This comment that just came back earlier.
Try.
Try or what?
Please.
John, class six unmaintained, which one is, was the subject of gates and bars? Is that...
Class six roads, the subject of gates and bars goes back to when they used to pass your cattle across the road, and the farmer would put a gate up on one end of the road and on the other, so that the cows wouldn't get out. And if somebody came through, they had to open the gate, drive their horse through, or their oxen or whatever, and then put the gate back up. So, it was not uncommon to say of class six roads, they're closed, subject to gates and bars. There are not many places where that becomes an issue, although my GPS unit in Vermont one day was taking me along, and it said, "Go straight." And I looked ahead, and there was a gate, and going out through the pasture was the road. So, if I wanted to go straight and follow my GPS, I would have had to get out, open the gate, drive through, and close it again. I decided to find a different way to get to the other side. But class, it doesn't change what a class six road is, it's just sometimes that's the phrase they use, and sometimes in town meeting, when they vote to reduce the road status to a class six, they do it subject to gates and bars, meaning that the owner can put up gates, but they can't be locked. Now, the other way is some roads, including one here in Barrington, were laid out as a class six. The developer of Deer Run laid out a stub that went over to what is now Village Place as a class six road, so they wouldn't have to build it, but so that the town would own the right-of-way and have the ability to connect Deer Run to the next property, which has now been done. So, you can now drive through from, over by the middle school and go through Deer Run, not that they want you to.
Village Place.
Village Place, yeah, and come out of Deer Run. So, sometimes they're laid out as class six roads. Most often, they became class six roads through discontinuance in use, especially after the depression. Although some of them was after the Civil War, when the sheep industry moved west, and the farmers didn't come back, because they found that Ohio river-bottom land was much easier to farm than New England hills.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, seems to have another public comment. I'll entertain a motion for... Yes?
I have a motion going non-public. I have a motion going non-public.
For what reason?
Personnel refutation. And then Chief, can you stick around?
I'll entertain that motion. So, Dan made the motion. Dan made the motion, do I have a second? There is no second, there will be no...
It's hard to know.
The first person he... That's, that's the...
That's the question that you asked me today.
Excuse me. Do I have a second? Saying you have a second doesn't carry. I have a motion for...